Good morning. I'd like to call to order the Oak Island Planning Board to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, adjustments to the agenda. I would like to take Section 2 and put it first and do O Business next.
Okay.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor? Done. And since we have no one here, I assume we have no public comment. So let's move on to new business.
Good morning, Planning Board. Hope everybody's doing okay today.
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
We skipped the minutes.
Oh, yeah. Y'all got to do.
Okay. Do we have any adjustments to the minutes? Gene?
No, sir.
Doyle? Gary? Mark?
Yes, one thing that I'd like to see, we have noted here about the discussions we were having on Phil and with that, the CRS rating program. I had, during that discussion, I had noted or mentioned that any recommendations or suggestions that come before us, that I would like to know how they affect the rating. And I didn't see that in there, so I'd like for it to reflect it.
Okay, I can just make an adjustment and bring it back next month.
That's great. Thank you. David?
Same thing here. I know you have to summarize our long discussion, but I had, I had asked Mr. Edwards if there was any instance through the years that he had seen where one property was higher than another, where there had been any actual, you know, erosion or flooding damage or anything that he had seen through the years, and he had said he, there had not been any. And I would like the record to reflect that.
Yeah, I'll just bring, yeah, I'll bring those back for you next month then.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. So we'll wait till next month to approve?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, I'd rather, if it's a change like that, I'd rather you see it again before it's approved.
Thank you. Okay, we're on to new business.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I just have, I actually had watched the May meeting and this might help the town clerk, but I think what Steve's response was, was that there were two examples known to him, but the owners knew they had wet lots before, right? So there wasn't any confirmation that the Phil from a, from an adjacent lot damaged, but I think he did mention there were two instances. So just to be clear, if we're going to capture that in the minutes, let's, let's be sure we're complete, complete with it.
Yes, ma'am, I'll have to draw it.
Thank you.
We good?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Good morning, everybody. So new business item number one is a discussion of the Unified Development Ordinance section that accepts certain structural elements from the height restrictions. So this was forwarded to the Planning Board for review by Town Council at their May meeting. So we do have a couple of months to work on this, so I really wanted to start off with, what is the, the history of how we have arrived at where we're at? Because there's several things that's happened over the course of two towns in many, many years that affect how we can proceed with any adjustment to height regulations here in the town. So I wanted to kind of set the discussion up with that background because it may color, you know, how you view any potential amendments going forward to something like this. So that being said, once again, that's literally what I just said, so let's get that slide. What does our current ordinance say for things that are essentially exempt from our height limitations? Church fires, chimneys, industrial smokestacks, town water towers, industrial conveyors, communication facilities, parapet walls not exceeding three feet in height, and mechanical apparatus for commercial structures? Items such as belfries, capolas, domes, monuments, observation towers, television and radio antenna, aerials, towers, flagpoles, and similar structures cannot be greater than the maximum roof height allowed for the principal structure. So we kind of have a set of things that aren't, and then a set of things that are still controlled like the, the principal structure itself. The most common thing we see usually is parapet walls not exceeding three feet in height, you know, or, or a lot of air conditioning equipment. If you have a big structure, a lot of times you put that on the roof instead of out to the side. So what is the history of this? This starts all the way back in 1987. In 1987, this is exactly our jurisdiction, but it ties into what our jurisdiction did. 1987, a local act was adopted for the town of Holden Beach, our neighbor's right next door. In 1989, that local act was amended to include Long Beach. So the amendment literally just stuck Long Beach in along with Holden Beach. It also changed it to require a referendum for increases in height limits. In 1991, a separate local act that was very similar to those was adopted for Yopon Beach. Then in 2005, 2005, 2006, the local acts for Long Beach and Yopon were consolidated. So in 1999, those two towns combined, we still had these two conflicting local acts that were a little bit different, pretty similar, but there was a couple of differences in that language. So the General Assembly combined those two into one local act now. In 2018, our current UDO was adopted, and in 2019, the height limitation exceptions was amended to our current standards. You should have some documentation of these changes in your agenda packet as well. But we'll kind of go through those. 1987 session, this is the Holden Beach Local Act, as you can see, Section 3 applies to the town of Holden Beach only. This was a strict height limitation of 35 feet, so there was no difference like we have now for the, the VE zone, which as you know now is 41, and everywhere else is 35. Section 2 of note, that the act does not apply to spires, belfries, capolas, antennas, water tanks, ventilators, chimneys, or other appurtenances usually required to be placed above the roof level and not intended for human occupancy. So some exceptions there in that original act that kind of included all of these acts later on. Long Beach was added to that local act. Once again, language in Section 1 was amended to require a referendum. Building height remained the same at 35 feet. And then under Section 3, you can see the amendments to include the towns of Holden Beach and Long Beach. Also a note here, Section 2 was added too. So that's 2.1A and B are additions. That Section 2 in the original, when we go back, that exempts certain things from that still remained. Those other things are additions too, so that is still hanging around in there, those The Yopon Beach Local Act, like I said, very similar. This one capped it at the zoning ordinance requirement. So the zoning ordinance requirements that were in place were encapsulated in this local act. Those were 35 feet, so the height restrictions, similar. And then once again, a referendum being required to increase height limitations.
Matt, can I interrupt you and ask one small question?
Yeah, absolutely.
In the 19, in the original one, the 1987, I thought it's not intended for human occupancy. Not that we need to talk about that, but as you go through the, the iterations of this, if, if you'll let us know, is that part being removed in subsequent, or is it still in place as we go through those next ones? I would appreciate it.
And that's an important part of all this discussion, for sure. So as we kind of work through the history, we'll get there, for sure. Because that, when these two acts are consolidated, you know, it's kind of the crux of all this because these old ones are gone. So then the consolidation here, 1999, the towns were consolidated. This is just kind of the language justifying the, the new one that was done in 2005, 2006, basically stating that we, it was set at 35. Both towns in the interim did pass referenda to increase the height limitation in the VE zone. That's where we get that 41 foot in the VE zone. There was a referenda in Yopon and Long Beach to change that standard. But there, there was still some inconsistencies because the Yopon one still said the Yopon comprehensive zoning ordinance, and the other one had a straight number, so there was obviously some confusion about how to apply that, and what works and what doesn't. So then, this is the language that was added and modified to, which basically sets us up where we are now as far as local acts go. Section 1, Section 2A, 2B. So the, the history of this and the, what's been understood is that Section 2 from that 1987 section about the exceptions still exists. This is added language to that. So, because you have two, you have Section 1, Section 2A, 2B, Section 3, 4. The, the thinking is that, or the understanding is that Section 2 from the 1987 that lists the exceptions is still in effect for the town, which makes sense because you would have some exceptions to this height limitations unless it was a, a strict cutoff. So once again, you have to have Section 2A, though, clarified that the height limitations may be increased or clarified, or if you're increasing or clarifying the limit, a referendum is required. That's an important, important point for us to, to think about, too. What is, what is clarifying the limit in context of, you know, what's an exception? How do you measure, things like that? And then how, you know, the language you have to use supersedes and consolidates all the prior local acts, and then that it does not apply to the town of Oak Island located north of the ICW. So this is island only. You know, the height in the town's jurisdiction that's on the mainland is set by our local ordinance, and we can adjust that just like we would any other zoning, zoning ordinance, planning board recommendation, town council review and decision, just like any other text amendment. So what were those exceptions prior to the UDO? Because like, like I said, there's been a couple of, of changes in there. We had kind of this long section, spires, belfries, places of worship, capolas, domes, ornamental towers, not intended for human occupancy, monuments, water towers, observation towers, chimneys and smokestacks. You know, it's just kind of an exhaustive list here. And then in 2018, when the UDO was adopted, there was spires, belfries, you know, a similar list of things, observation towers, conveyors, flagpoles, et cetera. And then in 2019, in 2018, 2019, the council asked staff in the planning board and eventually adopted these standards as far as what does or doesn't count towards that height limitation. And that was in response to some, in my, my understanding is in response to some questions about like, does it, does this meet our local act or not? You know, what's intended for human occupancy, what isn't, you know, that kind of thing. So I was, you know, still trying to clarify there what those are and get it closer to what everybody thought our local act was trying to get at. So that's a brief, well, I don't say brief, but it's several decades of history for you guys to digest there, when you think about, you know, what our current ordinance says, which is this 2019 version, and then what we're restricted on doing on our local act. We do need, and I'm lucky, we have a meeting with the town attorney today because I want to get some feedback on what they think, you know, a legal opinion about, you know, what constitutes a clarification of the height limitations of the island. Is it the exceptions? Is it how we measure? Anything like that? Because you guys need to know whether or not you're asking town council to either request a local act amendment, which the General Assembly can do, or put forward a referendum to further clarify those regulations without a local act amendment. Definitely a lot to think about there. And something for you guys to think about is, you know, what's intended for human occupancy, you know? Typically, you rely on building code for that type of thing, you know? Whether that counts as, you know, a stairway is not necessarily in the building code, an occupiable space, it's, you're using it to get from one place to another, that kind of thing. So like I said, wanted to start off this conversation that way, give you guys that background, because it is a lot, and it, I'm glad we have some town historians here that have been around for almost that long to help us put together kind of what's happened over the years for something like that. And the reason we put this first, too, is, you know, there's a question, you know, when we get to Phil later on, there's a question of, is how we measure the building height, is that even a clarification of the building height regulations? So if we, you know, talk about, right now, it's measured from the four corners of the structure at the adjacent grade, can we modify that without triggering that requirement for a referendum? Is that a further clarification? So definitely things we all need to think about, and as we work through this, you know, go forward. But for today, since this is just a discussion item, if you have any initial feedback, you can go ahead and give it now, and we'll definitely, you know, take that into consideration as we go forward. If you want to take some time to kind of, like I said, this is a lot of history to digest and some fairly questionable issues to deal with. So certainly if you want to take time to digest some of that, I can certainly understand that as well. So that's all I had for you for this kind of kickoff discussion, anyway. But Gene's got his, he's so studious, he's got his hand up and everything.
I'm not clear on parapet walls not exceeding three feet in height.
Exactly.
They're not controlled by the height limitations? So I can build a 42-foot parapet wall?
So what, what we usually see there is someone who goes up to or is close to the building height. So if you're in the, the, if you're outside of the flood hazard area, you know, you might build something that's, you know, 33, 34, or even right up to 35 feet. What this allows is a parapet wall, which is an extension above the roof line, a wall, three feet in height above that requirement. Typically, you might would see that for safety issues on like where, like I said earlier, if you've got air conditioning equipment up there that you need somebody to go service, that parapet wall might be a safety measure so that while they're up there, you know, there's, they're not literally standing on the edge of a 35-foot tall building.
Yeah.
But there's certainly other ways, other reasons you could put it in, you know.
Well, the three foot, now that you mention that, it bounces back. That's, if you've got a three-foot parapet wall around, you don't have to have fall protection if you're working on the roof. Okay. I got my walls mixed up in my head. Thank you.
Yeah, basically a safety thing if anybody's got to get up there.
Okay.
Absolutely.
I, I'm just really, really not clear what we're being asked to do because, to me, it's common sense that some of this stuff, you know, would be up on the roof and, you know, I don't understand really what we're being asked to do.
So what's, what's in front of the Planning Board is to review the exceptions that are in, in the UDO and make a determination as to whether they're consistent with our, with our local acts that regulate height. You know, is there anything in here that is inconsistent? Is there anything in here that should be, that shouldn't, or, you know, vice versa? You know?
Well, I mean, isn't that a call for our town attorney to make? Us?
Well, one, that's why I'm, you know, on the town attorney, but the, this is, this would be potentially an amendment to the UDO. Planning Board has to make a recommendation in order for council to take it up, so, or it has to at least be presented to the Planning Board, and you guys take 30 days, don't make a decision, council can take it up at that point. But I, any amendment to the UDO, I have to bring before you guys. So if there's even a consideration, that's why it's in front of you here today. And certainly if you have recommendations or thoughts, you know, it's your recommendation, so. I've got a couple of things.
Oh, go ahead.
Who wants to go first?
Did this topic not come from the hotel proposal?
Yes. It didn't.
So that certainly kicked off this discussion. You know, we had a special use permit for Ocean Crest Hotel that Town Council reviewed. They did have occupiable space on the roof line or above the, at the, the top of the structure. When you do that, when it's a commercial building and there are certain height restrictions, you have to provide a certain level of access. I'm certainly not a building code expert, so don't press me on that too much. But basically, per the building code and the type of structure and the type, type of occupancy, they needed an elevator to access that, per the building code. When the, when the building section reviewed it, you know, it was determined that that was a mechanical apparatus that's not intended for human occupancy, so, and it was needed for that top roof so that it fell into this exemption. Basically, what I understand council wants us to do is to make sure that that's consistent, and if it's not, you know, make a recommendation. And your recommendation could be, hey, we need to amend the local act to be more clear, or ask the General Assembly to amend the local act, or, you know, however you guys want to recommend we proceed. But what I don't want you to do is to, and that's why I'm going to birch this with, with legal counsel, is I don't want y'all to make a wholesale, we want to change the UDO, and unwittingly trigger one of those two things to have to happen. You know what I mean? I want y'all to be clear about what you're recommending Town Council do, and then Town Council be clear about what steps needs to be taken in order to accomplish that.
So, yeah, listening to that discussion, I think some of the question came from the definition of mechanical apparatus, and does that include the elevator or not? And is an elevator required in order to service? So it's sort of like, okay, we've got a 41-foot height, now we're going to put air conditioning up there, which would make sense, that you would put your air conditioning up there. But now we need an elevator to get to the air conditioning, and because we have an elevator, now we want to actually set it up as though it's like a sunbathing. And then the questions, I believe, in the Town Council were, are you serving drinks or food or other things? Or are you allowing people to come from, that aren't staying at the hotel so they can host events up there? So it was sort of that unintended, you know, the ability to sort of take it that much further. And recognizing that, yes, an elevator is a mechanical apparatus, I'm not sure that was the intent of mechanical apparatus, that you would have an elevator. Is it something as simple as, because to me, yes, you'd want to be able to put your air conditioning units up there and, and other mechanical, you know, equipment, especially for a commercial. Yes, you would need a parapet wall to be able to safeguard, but do you therefore then exclude elevators or provide some staircase mechanism that meets safety regulations that allows them to then service the apparatus that's up there? I think that was where that one little element then sort of opened up a bigger can.
Well, I mean, elevator is, I mean, you got to be ABA compliant.
We have to be, in, in this instance, you had to be compliant for emergency services to basically be able to get a stretcher up to the top, not using the stairway. So they needed an elevator because that top floor had some potential for occupancy.
But you're not fitting a stretcher in an elevator.
And this one, it has to be designed in order to provide that access.
So therefore, is that a commercial building issue, or would that be even for a residential?
That's a commercial building issue.
Just commercial?
Yes, sir. That wouldn't apply to a residential use. And you know, the, not to further muddy the waters, you know, if we go back to the, the 87, the, the original local act that started all this, it's even, it's questionably even more vague. Other appurtenances usually required to be placed above the roof level and not intended for human occupancy. What is another, you know, so, let's say there was no, using the hotel as an example, certainly not the rule, but let's say that that top level didn't have any, you know, occupancy to it or anything like that, but they were required to have that elevator there, and they were going to build right up to the, the roof line, right up to the top. Elevator shaft has additional clearance above the very top. So it could have been that that was even, even if that wasn't, you know, built in order to access the roof level, it could have extended a couple of, you know, maybe less, but certainly could have extended beyond that if they were going to build to the, the level. So it, it is important to clarify, you know, I, I think, you know, like I said, we'll, we'll get some further clarification with, with legal counsel, but, you know, unless we wanted to amend the ordinance to essentially parrot that 1987 language, I think we need to ask that question of, you know, is what we're trying to clarify something that needs to be either amended at the local act level or questioned in a referendum, one way or another? I think the only safe thing you could do right now and say, hey, we haven't done anything other than what the local act says, would be to amend our ordinance to literally say what the local act says, but the problem with that is, like I just said, that's, in my opinion, slightly more vague than what we have now, so that's not really, you know, helping us clarify it. Because what do you define as an appurtenance usually required to be placed above the roof level? That's, that's a pretty open question, in my opinion.
It seems to me that we need to clarify two things. What, what is mechanical apparatus and in what definition? Is it commercial, theoretically, any residential? Because there, you know, there are houses with rooftop decks now, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
There's lots of those, I think, quite a few. And also clarify the, whether that level above the maximum height is for human occupancy or not.
Right.
So it seems like those are the two key issues that we're being asked to consider. Would that be right, Matt?
Yeah, I think so.
I mean, really, that's really what would help our ordinance, I think, a lot, is to clarify those two things.
I think it would also be good for us in the next packet, maybe, to get that, what you're talking about, what is the requirement for the elevator? What is the requirement for ingressing and ingress and egress off of? That way we can, because that would be good for the public to see.
Yes.
That those things sort of preempt or, or, you know, they're imposed over what we're trying to do as a.
And they could be different, whether it's commercial, a commercial application with human occupancy or not, right?
Yeah, and our current exceptions, those mechanical apparatus exceptions are for commercial structures, like. If you're, if you're building a house and you're building it right up to the height level and you go, Matt, I want to put, you know, my elevator's going to go up there, I'm, you know, my whatever's going to go up there. Those mechanical apparatus for residential are not one of the exemptions, it's for commercial applications. And that's typically because you, you do see that more, you know, you have a big commercial structure, you might have a huge, you know, air handler or air conditioning equipment that you don't, you might not even have a place to put it on the ground, you know, just because of the size of it. So the roof might be the only place where you can do that.
Mark?
The hotel scenario, I don't know, you might, you might not be able to answer this, but my understanding is if that didn't have the rooftop terrace on it, an elevator to that would not have been required. Roof hatch would have been sufficient for maintenance access to work on the units, but because of it being a rooftop terrace and being occupied, therefore that kicked in the elevator requirement.
That's my understanding as well, but I'd need to clarify that with, with building code. I see the person shaking his head, he doesn't think that's.
Elevator can't be used for a means of egress. So the elevator can't be the method to the rooftop terrace because when the power goes out and the elevator fails. It can't be considered a, a means of egress, so the elevator can't trigger an occupancy. So that elevator may be used for occupancy, but it, but it's not the means of egress. So it's gotta have another way to get up there if it's gonna be occupied by rooftoppers, I guess. So even removing the elevator won't stop the use of that upper area.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's right.
Yeah.
Well, the only thing that you would say there is, uh, my understanding of, uh, the, the access requirements. Like I said, it was for, uh, emergency services to be able to access that because it is occupiable. So let's say you couldn't meet that with just stairs, which is, uh, what the, the guys in the, the building side, uh, decided. Um, then you may not be able to have, you know, if you don't meet that standard for her occupancy on the top, because you don't have the elevator. You know, you might lose that capacity for it. But once again, that's, uh, and I can definitely, um, have Steve here at the next meeting to help us work through some of these building code issues. Cause he really is the, the expert on that end of it for sure.
So Matt, just to be clear, be clear, so development understood that this was always gonna be a human occupancy deck, right? And so that's why they okayed the elevator because they needed that for the emergency access?
Yeah, so.
Is that what you just said?
Yeah, I mean, it, it's on their plans and it always has been as having a rooftop, uh, occupiable area.
I just think there's some misunderstanding about that, is why I wanted to clarify.
I didn't infer that, I thought there was other mechanical equipment that therefore required the elevator. Then they had the elevator and that required the occup, I mean, that allowed for occupancy. I didn't realize the occupancy was the plan and the elevator was the mechanism to basically allow that.
There may be other mechanical equipment up there, but the.
Say, I'm sorry, sorry.
There may be other mechanical equipment on the roof that I'm not, uh, aware of, but the, yeah. Um, and we had, so, you know, this is kinda getting into the weeds a little bit, but, um. When they submitted, there was, uh, the initial plan review had the elevator on there and we flagged it as, hey, this exceeds our, our height limitations. Um, and then when, like I said, when the building code reviewed it, they said, no, since this has occupancy, this additional access standard for an elevator needs to be put in. So since that, and that triggered this whole mechanical apparatus, uh, you know, discussion as well. So there was a, definitely some back and forth in review on both sides for whether that was, uh, allowed or necessary or not.
Thank you for clarifying.
Really?
For me, about the, about the deck was already there. Because I've been on many commercial buildings that are over forty feet.
Yeah.
That's got air conditioning units that do not have elevators.
Yeah.
Because I've climbed ladders and everything else to get up there. So, and, and, okay, I was thinking.
Looking apartment buildings, right, that have a, you know, big row of all the individual air conditioners on the roof and there's a ladder with a hatch, not an elevator.
Cause see, I was thinking that to serve, they were saying to service the equipment that was up there, they required the elevator. Okay, thank you.
That's not what it was.
Yeah.
At this point, they have vested rights into our current ordinance, so.
Oh, yeah, they're approved.
They didn't.
They have a special use permit, that's right.
And, you know, I just kinda read black and white, you know, it says, you know, mechanical apparatus is not, is not controlled by this for commercial structures. Well, clearly an elevator is a mechanical apparatus, so.
Matt, can we have Steve come up?
Oh, Steve's here.
We have, uh, some questions, Steve.
Steve snuck in right here at the beginning.
Please step forward.
Do you wanna talk about mechanical apparatus and access requirements for rooftop decks and commercial structures?
Elevators are mechanical apparatus. They do extend up beyond buildings.
Yep.
Morning.
Good morning.
Questions?
I'll start if it's okay.
Start, Mark.
The, we were talking about the recent hotel. And my question was to whether or not my understanding was correct. If the rooftop terrace either was not on there or was not approved, then the elevator access to that would not been required. A rooftop hatch would have been sufficient for any mechanical equipment up there.
That, that's correct.
Okay.
Right. The, the rooftop terrace had been on the plans the whole time, though.
Now, do we know how tall the rooftop terrace was?
Well, it's the parapet wall would be the, and it was right there at the, what, forty-four feet?
Yeah, they built it.
Forty-one.
Forty-one.
Parapet was forty feet.
Three-foot parapet wall, have a three-foot parapet wall over there.
And then the elevator took it, what, up another six feet?
Uh, fourteen feet, well, or something like that.
What was the total height, including the elevator?
That's a Matt question.
Cause out of the plans in front of you, you'd have to pull them in.
Uh, was it not around?
What's the average, eight feet, nine feet?
Fifty-six feet, I think. It was over fifty feet.
Fifty-six feet?
Yeah, fifty-six to the top.
So that's a fifteen-foot allowance for the elevator?
Well, they have to have a, um, a space as the architect or I believe whoever was speaking that day. When you put the elevator in, in case somebody's on top of the car, you, you've gotta have that space. And I can't remember how much space that was, four or five feet above that. And then of course, what else, what also took it up was the aesthetics that the town council was recommending, give some type of street appeal. And so they put a little peak on top of it and that too increased the height. So if they kept it flat, they probably could have dropped it down another three feet or something like that.
I thank you.
I have a, a point for Matt, um, if you would do me a favor and, um. Just clarify with the, um, town attorney. As a realtor, I sort of get beat over the head with all, you know, all forms of residential discrimination. As far as with a residential structure, um, if, if we allow one person to have the, a rooftop deck. And then another person who has a disability also wants a rooftop deck. We can't deny them having elevator access up there is, would be my understanding. So if you'll just clarify that with the town attorney, because it will come up.
And in that instance, I think the first option for them, for the, uh, the person who wants to build that would be to go to the Board of Adjustment.
Right, for variance.
Um, and there is, there is language, uh, in the Board of Adjustment standards to take into account people who need a reasonable accommodation under a disability. Um, so I feel like that would be the option for them, but I can definitely get some feedback, uh, from legal as well on that, for sure.
I've got a question, this may be both of you. To going forward, if we pick this up and send it to council. Is there any way we could put in a maximum height for total height of a building, including mechanical? Apparatus as a whole?
Yeah, I think.
Which would lower the top roof line to account for that?
And I, yeah, I, I, I get where you're going and I, I think that's where we need to, um, determine whether that would require an amendment to the local act because of that section two in the original. Um, so that, that's, like I said, uh, that's what we're gonna, uh, one thing I've got on my list of stuff to discuss with, with the town attorney as well, so.
And would that assist you if we got that clarified as far as mechanical and everything at a total height?
Um, it's a difficult question to answer, uh, there's, there's a lot of legal.
Yeah.
But I would say, you know, the, the, the local act actually says appurtenances.
Yeah, we talked about that.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
I missed that part. But I, I think whatever you do to adjust that height, um, would have to probably be done by referendum.
Okay.
I think you probably already discussed that too.
Yeah.
But in twenty nineteen, when it was changed, there was no public referendum. And it clearly states any change in height or clarification is.
Yeah, probably should have appealed in a hundred and twenty days of that. At two thousand and six, they changed it as well. Um, and that was to, and I, I think they changed on the local act and Lisa probably be more, uh, correct on news records. But in two thousand and six, they did change the way you measure the height. And, um, you know, they, they did get clarity, they combined the Yopon and the Long Beach. Because Yopon had a two-foot, uh, for certain zones in the flood, the flood zones. And then, uh, Oak Island only had a one-foot freeboard, uh, not, I'm sorry, um, forty-one foot height and, and forty-two foot height were the difference.
So David, with what you're asking, um, kind of basically it would, if it did have to go for referendum. It would be something like maybe saying the maximum height is forty-one foot, including any.
Mechanical.
Mechanical, blah, 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 and then that would be, if that was approved and adopted.
That would affect the design and layout of the initial plan.
As a max, right.
Yeah.
I think that we'd probably also have to amend the local act, just under question that we'd have to present.
Clarification of what's deemed a mechanical apparatus, that wouldn't need to go to a referendum, that's just clarification.
A mechanical apparatus is very broad.
Right, so we could limit that without a referendum.
It states any clarifying change has to go to public referendum.
Yeah, I think the way the, the local act reads and other appurtenances, um, that, that allows for even a stairwell, that would have to go up there. That's an appurtenance to a building. And we put mechanical, it does say mechanical apparatuses in there.
In the current, yeah, yes.
But it says appurtenances in the, uh, local act, so that could even be a stair tower.
So, so Matt, you'll bring us back some guidance from the town attorney and.
Yeah, I just hadn't had a chance to chat with them before this meeting. Um, so we'll definitely have some guidance as far as, uh, what if anything we can do without going to those options? And what would trigger needing local act amendments, referendums, et cetera? So we can, you know, give you guys some good guidance, cause that might affect, you know, how you wanna make your recommendation as well. Um, you know, do you wanna place your hands or your fate in the hands of the general assembly? You know, do you wanna ask council to frankly spend a lot of money on a referendum to answer this question? You know, those are all, you know, it's up to council to decide whether to spend the money or not, but, um, definitely.
And, and Matt, with that, could you bring back some examples, maybe as you're so good to do for us? Just examples of other municipalities that have had, you know, like challenges or like ordinance text language that maybe we could look at?
Yeah.
May help us.
Sure, there's, uh, you know, quite a few examples of, you know, coastal height regulations out there, absolutely.
Would the next opportunity for referendum probably be the November? I mean, there's already election, is that when, if we, if we took that route? Cause I'm trying to think if that is the first possible.
I think we've already passed that, that's.
Yeah.
Oh, we have.
The ballots are.
I would guess the Board of Elections is probably already full speed ahead on the election.
Oh, got it, okay, so, okay, that's, that's good to know.
But I think that, um, we're past that, but I can check for sure.
Okay, if you wouldn't mind, just, that, that, that will be helpful to know.
Yeah, absolutely. Sure.
But could we add something to the amendment that says? Nothing can be done above X amount of feet except for servicing mechanical apparatus? And then just stop rooftop decks altogether?
Uh, I think you'd probably run to the question of, is that a clarification? You know what I mean? Like, at what point, you know, do you stop measuring the, the building and you're looking at the occupancy? Is that clarifying a height regulation? I mean, I just wanna press on you, we, we wanna be careful with any of these changes that we make, for sure. Um, cause we don't wanna get caught later on and say, oh, you should have done X, Y, Z. And not, not have explored it fully. Yeah, I think you, you know, if you say, at what point do you trigger it too? Cause, you know, like Steve said, if you have an elevator, or even if you're required to have an elevator, uh, even, there's a cushion above that elevator as well. You may have architectural features, so even if you, you know, what threshold do you say, okay? At, you know, thirty-five feet in the V E, you know, if you build above that, you can't have a rooftop deck, you know? That, that's kind of what we're, we're getting at in here. Like, at what point do you limit that rooftop access to the public? And then, uh, is that really still getting at what you're trying to get at too? Cause you don't wanna say, say that and then somebody come in and say, well, you know, my elevator's still, you know, five feet over the height exception. Cause then you haven't really, uh, attacked the problem.
Well, Matt, I think if we set a maximum height, that would be more clarification than trying to.
Yeah, if you.
Yeah.
Your point would, I mean, it'd certainly be, uh, simple to administer, you know what I mean? If you take, this is it, um, you know, the, you know, going back to that eighty-seven, you know, in Steve referenced too, you know, the, the vagueness of what is an appurtenance usually required to be placed above the roof. That's pretty wide.
To have a use up there, you have to have access.
Yeah.
Depending on the, the size of the act, the area up there, it may require two sets of stairs, which is what the, uh, hotel that was, uh, approved. Motel, whichever one it is, was just approved. It had to have two sets of stairs and then of course, one elevator to get there. Of course, the stairs, they were able to maintain that height, cause they didn't have a roof over top of it. But in some circumstances, depending on the occupancy, it would have to be an fire-rated vertical, uh, stairwell enclosure. So people would be protected to come down.
To me, I think the thing for us to think about is we have a, an intention document that's forty-one feet. We then allow a parapet and mechanical equipment. But then somehow in all of that, we've added fifteen feet above a forty-one foot height, incorporated it into the design of the building for aesthetics. And that all justifies adding fifteen feet to a forty-one foot height thing. And I just feel like that is, that's now going, it, 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 the, the ambiguity of the language is allowing anybody to. They could have done a twenty-five foot elevator if they wanted to, I mean, they could have put a bank of four elevators if they wanted to. And there's nothing that would have said, not, that those four elevators wouldn't have been mechanical apparatus. And so I just feel like we're letting the ambiguity sort of completely, um, um, undermine the intention, which, and I'm not saying it shouldn't go above. I'm not saying it shouldn't, I'm just saying forty-one to fifty-six to me is a massive change, uh, that I don't think, um, the general statute was ever intended to allow. So, um, somewhere in the middle, I think, is where we, you know, the use of the intended use and the height restriction is where we need to go back.
What's the typical height of a, say, air-conditioned unit for a commercial building?
I, I've seen some large chillers on top of roofs before and they're pretty large, they're six, eight feet, some situations.
So if we did like a maximum height to allow for like, say, an eight-foot air-conditioned air handler unit? Go maximum forty-eight feet max height to include all mechanical apparatus, would that be like a fair, just?
I, I think what would be fair is if, if somebody wants to have that roof to, if a, a commercial building, cause this is not residential, wants to have that deck or, or occupancy up on there that they're allowed to have. That we need to look at what the minimum requirement for that elevator shaft is and maybe set that as the, uh, maximum height for appurtenances. Or mechanical apparatuses, however you wanna word it.
David?
I think we should increase the parapet wall height requirement.
They actually have.
If you block their view, it won't be a rooftop terrace. There's two ways.
Well, now, parapet wall, if you, if you look at it, it, it can be a rail, a guardrail system to keep someone from falling off the roof. It's not just, you know, necessarily, so they could come up with a glass parapet wall, it, it could be a rail system. Cause parapet wall is, has multiple uses and, and one is to prevent people from falling off of the wall.
The town could define, could change their definition of a parapet.
If, well, if it's in the building code definition, we, we may not be able to do that. I, I don't know if it is really defined in building codes, that's something we can look at.
In other words, a hundred ways to skin a cat and ain't none of them go the right way.
Yeah, I mean, we could.
We just wanna be sure we don't go the wrong way.
Oh, yeah. Any other questions or discussion or anything for now?
Thanks, Steve.
Very helpful.
All right, so, uh, like I said, we'll, we'll, uh, touch base with legal counsel, we'll pull some other jurisdictions as well for you guys to look at, uh, next month. Um, and hopefully have some guidance about, you know, hey, if you wanna do X, you need to do Y for y'all to consider. Um, so that, you know, you know what path we're asking everybody to take, no matter which way we go on something like this.
And could we do that, say we do that for commercial, do like a V E max height, a residential max height? That would encompass all these?
Um, I mean, with the preface that it may require, uh, it may potentially require a local act amendment or a referendum. it may potentially require a local act amendment or a referendum.
Just encompass all those definitions.
If you're open to those two options, you know, we can do a whole lot. You know what I mean? Uh, but with the knowledge that one, uh, you know, you may not even get them, you know, we're placing our hands, uh, and we're placing our fate in someone else's hands in those instances. I will say, um, you know, I'm on, uh, weekly calls with the legislative committee for the North Carolina American Planning Association chapter. Um, and the feedback that we get from them whenever the legislature is in session is that the, the state legislature is always looking at what local jurisdictions are doing and are not hesitant about, uh, you know, if they see something they think is an overreach, you know, taking action, which is their job, you know, to do. But that's another thing, you know, if we're asking for a, a local act amendment, we need to have that in our minds as well, is that folks are looking every day at, at what we're doing down here, so.
Even if, even without a local act amendment request, it would, to, to change the total height limit would require a referendum period? Because that's what the act says.
That's right, yes, ma'am.
If, if, just remind, um, if you could also bring the regulations of wh- when an elevator is required, like what are the circumstances for an elevator? That would be helpful for us, thank you so much.
I'll get with Steve, we'll, we'll put that together for you.
Thank you.
Now, if you send something to, uh, to a referendum to the, to the, to Raleigh, couldn't they come back and change it? And say, if we say forty-one foot total height, couldn't, couldn't they come back and go, we think sixty's good? And then you're stuck with whatever they come back with.
Uh, I mean, potentially it looked like is, you know, an act of the general assembly. I mean, we would be making a request to, uh, to our local representatives to consider putting one forward in that instance. Um, you know, they may have some feedback on, you know, what they think is appropriate. I don't, I haven't worked through a lot of those, fortunately, in my career. So I can't really dive too deep into it from experience anyway. But, um, it is up to the general assembly to carry forward, deny, modify local acts. That, that's all within their purview.
But just for clarification again, the, what they voted on was setting the limit at thirty-five, and that any change to that would be a local referendum. So
Yeah, so
They're not going up to, they're not, we're not being more restrictive than they are.
You have two options, right? You can say, hey, we just want to do a referendum to change or clarify the height limitation. If you want to get at that section two that we talked about from the original, that, that has those exceptions.
Right, right, right.
If you want to amend that or change that in some way, that would require the local act to actually be modified. And I think that's part of the crux of our question is, you know, do our exceptions that are our local ordinance now jive with that original section two? That as far as we understand is still in effect, that says, hey, these, these things are, uh, not limited by the height restriction.
And you're talking about the original nineteen eighty-seven?
Yeah, that's right, yes, sir.
But I mean, the public sees forty-one feet.
More restricted.
Yeah.
So they look at some, anything that's forty-one and a half feet, they're going to go crazy.
Absolutely, yes, sir.
So, you know, I kind of like David's idea. Why can't suck it forty-one feet?
Set it, set the maximum height to include like a mechanical apparatus only. At like
As defined what that mechanical apparatus is.
Yes, and then say, take into account, say, like Steve said, maybe eight feet. So forty-one plus eight is forty-nine feet max, and that's it. If you need to change the design of the building to lower everything else to make that work, then you do that.
Well, would that then mean that if I didn't have my rooftop terrace and need my elevator for it, that I can make my roof
Yeah.
fifty feet tall?
No, no, maximum.
You're saying a roof line limit and then a apparatus.
And then to include all apparatus max.
Some, at some max.
At some max height.
Yeah, basically, basically those exceptions in the nineteen eighty-seven, section two, setting some type of limit for those exceptions as well, I think is what you're getting at. Some hard, some hard line for that.
Some hard line number that would include like a mechanical apparatus, but yet you wouldn't be going up fifteen feet on top of the forty-one.
Sadly, in this instance, it sounds like our own town council made it taller.
Well, they were required to because mechanical apparatus
No, they wanted a, a roof, roof on it for looks.
Yeah, so they increased the height three more feet on top of that.
Well, you know, I also just need to point out that, you know, this is one instance, and we're not going to have very many of these. And it would be a shame for this one structure that made everybody upset to cause us to spend a million dollars to do a voter referendum.
And it already has vested rights.
Yeah, and, and we're, we've already going to have that one, and we're, we're going to have very, I don't, I don't think this is a, a widespread enough issue to, to justify doing a voter referendum. But that's, that's just my opinion.
Yeah, but I do think this is a good example of, I think, maybe more due diligence on behalf of this planning board and the town council as a whole. Because where we see these things happen is when someone's testing it. It, it's, it's in those gray areas. And sometimes I think the time to really, for us or the town council to think, now, I would agree with you a hundred percent, a hundred percent, I don't, I don't, there is a cost benefit here of, of doing this. But I think at some point, these gray areas, the unintended, you know, omissions are what we need to be testing, and then trying to close those on the front end versus having and again, if this was an elevator, I wouldn't have, I think fifteen feet is where you just go, geez Louise, you know, what, how, how, how much runway do we want to allow somebody to violate a forty-one foot, you know, height thing? And so I think that's just, uh, but I would agree, there's
So who says that maybe the two hotels that's on Oak Island Drive are tore down ten years from now, and somebody wants to come in and build one just like on the beach?
Well, again, is that the end of the world that we have, okay?
It's not, but are we trying to maintain like consistent height regulations to where somebody's not trying to game the system and go above that and design and say, oh, I need an elevator, and it's going to be
Well, for one, there are people trying to do that every day.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
But, again, you have to, you have to weigh the cost versus the benefit there, and
I think once Matt gets back from legal, he'll have some better
Yeah. And once again, you guys, you guys make your recommendation with the knowledge of, you know, what path you're going to need to take, you know, whether or not to take that path and all the consequences that come with it, whether it's changing the local act, doing a referendum, trying to amend the ordinance, you know, that, that's for, uh, the elected body to decide in the end.
Yeah.
I don't have my zoning map with me today, but where else on the beach could there be another hotel like that? Is there, is there opportunity for other properties that would qualify for that zoning?
Well, um, I mean, hotels are special, hotels are a special use in the community business zoning district, so
So in theory, a house, houses could be torn down, right, in certain zones, and one of these hotels could come up. So I'm just, I'm trying to give the counterargument to Ms. Morgan's argument that I, I think, like some of have said, this, the job of this board is to try to see into the future and not dwell so much on the past. I totally agree with that, but development is a huge thing in this county, not just in the town of Oak Island, but everywhere. So I think we need to be more forward-looking in things like this.
I think there'll be more hotels off the island than on the island.
Oh, yeah.
And they're governed by a different set of rules because they're north of the waterway.
Well, as land becomes more expensive on the island, we know that density is a way to make the economics more
Right.
balanced. And so, you know, ten years ago, you probably could have bought a motel for a million five. You know, today, you're going to buy it for two or three. And then you're going to look at it and say, what is my ROI? Do I need to add another floor? Do I need to tear down a part of it or what have you? So I think that's where, going forward, the economics are going to be something that we're a motivation to play the ordinance loopholes.
Chairman Bradley, could I, could I recommend that we, I think we've, we have our action plan here? Right, Matt, could we move on to the next item on the agenda?
So let's go to old business.
Okay. I gotta go backwards on my agenda here. So this is a continuation, uh, of discussion that we've had. You know, we, we've, during, when we were reviewing the table of uses, plan board had a lot of discussion about, you know, retaining walls, fill, et cetera. And agreed to kind of continue that discussion, uh, going forward because it was kind of a sticky issue that warranted some additional discussion. Last month, we, we continued to talk about that. We looked at, you know, some other coastal jurisdictions and what they do. What about the community rating system program? And, uh, what does our coastal protection stuff look like, as well as a comprehensive land use plan? You know, to re-review our current ordinance for fill, the, the first note I'll make is that the structure of it is not great because there's, this is the definition for fill, and it contains a bunch of regulations, which you usually don't stick a regulation in the definition. You define something one place and you regulate it in another. So, uh, but currently, it said it, uh, no greater than one foot above the crown of the road, or even with the highest adjacent lot, whichever is less. There's a note in here about not being greater than it's necessary to meet the health department requirements for an improvement permit that's related to septic tanks, which, uh, you can't really do on the island anymore, there's, it's all sewer now. Fill greater than one foot will have an engineered fill plan for stabilization and stormwater retention. So, uh, basically, if you're trying to meet that first criteria, and you're getting even with your highest adjacent lot, if that allows you to put in more than a foot, you know, you may be able to, you know, your guy, your next door neighbor might be two foot, and you're going up two foot. So once you exceed one foot total, uh, you need an engineered fill plan for stabilization and stormwater retention. There's some language in there about letter of map provision based on fill that deals with, um, people who are in a flood hazard area who are trying to essentially elevate to get out of the flood hazard, uh, area. Lots with drastic elevations, and then commercial stormwater designs, uh, as well. This one clarifies a little bit about, uh, stormwater retention, uh, measures and soil stabilization plans, what the fill plans and stormwater runoff plans have to deal with. And then, once again, a clarification for someone who's seeking a letter of map provision based on fill. You know, a few challenges with this ordinance, uh, going back to the, now, we've discussed a lot, so I won't belabor my whole lot. Going back to the first one, no greater than one foot above the crown of the road, or even with the highest adjacent lot, whichever is less. Okay, where do we measure that on the adjacent lot? How is that looked at? Is it the highest point on the adjacent lot? Is it the contour of the adjacent lot? What if this lot is higher in this part, and this lot is higher in this part? How do we figure, you know, how do you, how do you manage that? It can be a little bit difficult. How do we deal with slopes in the side yard where you, you are allowed some fill, but you need to contour that in a way that, uh, helps stormwater out? How do we deal with, uh, requests for additional fill in the building envelope where you have, you know, certain expectations to be able to develop that area as well? And what are the ramifications for that? So what is a, you know, how do we look at drastic elevations? You know, that's, uh, always an interesting question. You know, most people think the, the island is pretty flat. You know, there's a few, uh, lots, especially as you get closer to the beach, that have some, some pretty interesting elevation changes as you go through them. So kind of a lot to deal with there. And then, you know, how does this impact building height? You know, going back to our discussion earlier, the current requirement for measuring building height is the finished grade, the four corners of the structure at the finished grade. So whatever fill you allow, that's the finished grade. That's where we're going to measure building height from. So how you clear, you know, can we clarify that? Can we change that in some way that, without doing a, you know, going back a local act or a referendum? You want to be careful with, with kind of all of those things going forward. So we had a lot of discussion about last month. We looked at a lot of, um, other local jurisdictions. A few had some good ideas that, uh, seemed like it resonated with folks. I did give you all a couple of examples of fill across the island. Here we have a, a lot that's got, uh, a retaining wall at the property line. Now, you can't see this, but if you're staying in the road facing this house, the lot to the right of it is, is even higher than this. It kind of slopes all the way down into the, into this wooded lot to the left. But they've even had a retaining wall and then pulled into the building envelope within the setback and had an additional retaining wall there. So in that instance, when we measure that building height, we'd measure it from the four corners of the structure, despite there being, you know, a little bit of a difference in that outer retaining wall and the inner retaining wall. Uh, and then this is one, uh, this lot kind of slopes to the back. The lot in the foreground closest to you looking at the picture is lower than the lot on the far side. So I'm sorry, I don't have a pointer, but if you look at the screen behind you, you know, this lot is lower. There's a house here, uh, the elevated house here. That lot on the other side is higher than this. So you can see that there's some, some fill in here. They also wanted to do some retaining wall and some bulkheadings through here. And there was an expectation that that would be backfilled in order for that to be, uh, you know, structurally sound for that, uh, that structure. So definitely, uh, some interesting examples and some, some questions for us to work through. So based on the discussion we had last month, we, we talked about kind of a couple of different ways. One, one idea that I wanted to put forward was, uh, as I mentioned with our current standard, it's kind of like, how and where do you measure, you know, what's the highest adjacent lot? You know, at what point do you measure the highest adjacent lot? And we had talked a little bit about finding a way to average things out as you go down. So hopefully, you're, you're not just, if this guy's way higher than this over here, you're not just matching this guy, you're finding that balance in between. So kind of laid out, and these could be adjusted, obviously. You know, how do we measure that, that area? If we do do an average too, the same question comes up, how do we measure it? So one thing you could do is have, uh, so within the front setback area, you take the average crown of the road at the center of the lot and the two adjacent lots, and you average those three out, and that's, uh, in your front setback area. And then you do cross-sections, right? So you take points, parallel points, going down the lot from the front lot line in twenty-foot intervals, and you average those out. So basically clarifying how we measure, you know, if we decide to do an average, how you measure that average. You know, you have to pick some kind of points, uh, to measure from. Sorry, this is kind of rough, but just a quick, you know, and dirty, say this black strip in the middle here is, at the top of the page here is the, the road. You know, you would measure at the center of the lot and the crown, the two points at the front, and then you just do parallel lines in twenty-foot intervals down. And that's how you establish those averages that you could, uh, potentially go to. So once again, if this guy's high and this guy's low, you're not just matching the high guy on one side, you're kind of balancing that out as you go down the lot. We, I talked with, uh, you know, building and stormwater about this idea too. They seem like it, seemed like a pretty good balance of how to, you know, measure things out. So we've definitely been coordinating on this discussion going forward because there's a lot of, uh, a lot of interactions here, especially with, you know, people wanting to create a flat building pad for their structure, people who have to attenuate the stormwater runoff when they're, they're doing that. So we have definitely been having these discussions regularly. You know, providing some additional guidance for stormwater, commercial stormwater, letters of map provisions, drastic elevations. You know, the drastic elevation thing is, in my opinion, kind of open right now. You know, if you have a drastic elevation and you're trying to, to meet that, there's an argument that probably could be made that you could even go higher or lower to try to meet that drastic elevation. So just putting a cap in that, maybe, uh, and that could be adjusted too, as far as whatever, we started with a foot. So let's say you're allowed to do this as a, uh, your average is here, but you need a little bit extra in order to deal with a very steep elevation change somewhere. So giving them a little bit of grace, uh, in addition, a letter of map provision based on fill. You know, they're trying to get out of a flood hazard area, so they might need a little bit more than the average. But you still want to keep that cap on there as well. Then requiring a sealed letter from an engineer or surveyor. If someone's claiming a drastic elevation, we need a design professional to go on the lot and say, yes, this is a drastic elevation. I'm going to put my professional seal on it, that we think this needs, uh, some additional consideration. This next bullet is something we This next bullet is something we talked about a lot. You know, when you pull into the building envelope, you know, there's an expectation that you can develop within that building envelope to a certain amount. One challenge you have with that is if there's additional fill in that building envelope, the way we measure height, you know, you may say, hey, I can get an extra foot of fill in here. And then, because that's where we measure the building height from, is that finished grade, now I'm going to build up to the elevation. So looking at our local act, you know, we had talked a little bit about, maybe we can measure from, you know, let's say you're pulling in a retaining wall and adding a foot of fill under the building envelope. Maybe we could measure from that retaining wall. Well, in order to clarify how we measure height, that loops us kind of back into that original discussion. So and if we took that route, you might run into an issue where, oh, you should have done a referendum or amended the local act in order to do that because you're clarifying the height regulation by changing how you measure the building height. Another way to attack that is to say, hey, you know, this is the fill that you're allowed on the lot, even in the building envelope, you're not getting more, regardless of whether you're, you know, retaining it or, you know, putting in a bunch of additional stormwater measures or, you know, regardless of those additional structural circumstances. This is the max, even if you're in the building envelope, there there's no extra there. Yes, ma'am.
Ma'am, I'm sorry to interrupt, just a quick question. So what we're saying, for clarification for the public, is that if 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 a lot gets fill, the height, the total height on the the property then becomes that finished grade.
Yes, ma'am.
After the fill.
Yes, ma'am. Mm-hmm. It's finished grade. That's right. And then finally, you know, we talked a little bit about how you deal with side and rear setbacks. A lot of jurisdictions have a requirement for a three-to-one slope or some type of a retaining wall with adequate stormwater measures because some of the concerns have been, you know, stormwater runoff, et cetera. You could certainly go both or either, you know. This is draft for discussion, so, you know, obviously, if there's feedback, hey, we want to do just three-to-one slope or retain walls are fine, or, you know, however you want to deal with that going forward. But that would be within the side or the rear setback area. So let's say you're not doing a retaining wall and you get a certain amount of fill, and you don't want to do a retaining wall, you just have to slope that and maintain that slope in the side yard setback area, in the rear yard setback area. And we definitely can, that was pretty consistent with most coastal jurisdictions. There was one that went four-to-one, which would obviously be a steeper slope. I talked with our stormwater administrator, and his feedback was that three-to-one is kind of the standard. He didn't, he couldn't imagine why you would go steeper than that. So that's what we went with here as well. So you do have a draft in your packet, a red line draft, about how this could all be structured out. But once again, this is discussion for feedback. We kind of had a general discussion last time. If there's anything that you'd like to see tweaked or changed or additional general feedback, you know, obviously, we can take that into consideration and and work on something for a recommendation going forward.
First of all, I apologize because I was not here at the last meeting, and I know you guys talked a lot about it, so if you answer this question, I'll move on. Don't waste any time, but to me, the biggest issue that we seem to be wrestling with with fill is really the impact on stormwater. Is that a correct assumption? I know there are other things, but that's sort of the one biggest impact that we're really dealing with. Both, go ahead.
Well, I mean, now we have stormwater requirements that didn't used to be in place.
Okay.
So that's that's basically already being addressed.
Can you go back to the first picture that you put up here? Sorry, stay with your point because it's that one.
Yeah.
So you look at this picture, and I would say that in this picture, the way that this is graded, whoever the adjacent property owner is on the left is going to bear the brunt of the water runoff as a result of the fill here. So is the is this language that you're proposing something akin to this? Maybe your three-to-one is not quite as, and it's not you, I don't mean you, you know what I mean? Is this sort of a little more copacetic with what you're proposing here? Because I look at this, and my first reaction is, wow, you're creating a deluge to your neighbor as a result of what you've done here. I don't see any stormwater mitigation. Like, I don't see a dip or a ditch before you would get to the retaining wall. I don't see a French drain requirement. I don't see anything like that, that I would think if you're going to do something, even a foot or whatever, that you would that you could do to deal with the biggest issue, which in my opinion is the stormwater impact to your neighbors and to the town.
Yeah, so in this, based on what we've got drafted here, in this instance, that would either be, instead of a steep drop-off retaining wall, there could be a retaining wall, but they'd have to go through stormwater to make sure that all the stormwater concerns are being met. So if there is a French drain or something that's necessary there, or some other measure, we could take a look at that. Or require a three-to-one slope, which would obviously be much more gentle than a just a drop-off retaining wall there.
Okay, so you're saying that current stormwater requirements would have dealt with the issue that this is having, that this would potentially have on an on an adjacent property?
I mean, this current, this lot currently meets our local stormwater ordinance requirements, or it wouldn't have passed any permitting and inspection or anything like that. But when they do do a retaining wall, you know, if the retaining wall is something that we want to continue to allow in that side or rear yard setback, we just reinforce language that make sure that all of our stormwater requirements are met for runoff in adjacent properties as well, so.
So I guess my my overall comment would then be, and we don't have it here, but I might go, I'll go back and read the stormwater requirements to make sure that what we're proposing here, that our stormwater requirements are enough
Oh, yeah.
to offset, you know, the retaining walls and all those things. Because in some instances, and I'll I'll use the example of the 2,500 block of West Pelican. If you go down that block, excuse me, Dolphin, if you just go down that block, the homes sit way down from the road. One home has an eight-foot retaining wall, and then all of the other houses just sit, you know, you know, way down. I'm not worried about those. It's just when those end up being torn down and somebody rebuilds, or is it just, you know?
And I did broach that subject with our stormwater administrator when we were talking about this. I'll, you know, looking at other coastal jurisdictions and what we talked about, I was initially leaning towards, hey, let's just do a three-to-one slope right in the side and rear yard setback. And he was confident that as long as it met the stormwater requirements, we could include a retaining wall as well. So we did include that in this discussion draft as well, you know, to get your feedback and go forward. But I didn't get the impression that he was concerned about a lot with the retaining wall being able to meet stormwater requirements, so.
Well, this would not be okay with me if this were my neighbor because the retaining wall's got to be higher than the dirt. It's got to retain what's coming off of the slope.
And give it somewhere to go.
What's coming off of that slope's got to go somewhere other than in my yard.
Good point.
Point. What Matt is proposing now, this would not happen, correct?
Well, it could
If we use the average of the two adjacent lots.
So if let's, and in this instance, like I mentioned, that you have a very low lot on one side, and the other lot is very high, so this could be the average, you know what I mean? So this could be something you still would see. But what it would eliminate is that that outer inner retaining wall setup that you've got here, where the inner retaining wall is short, but it is a little bit higher. So we would make them, they would not be able to do, add that extra fill in the building envelope. Now, I don't want to speak because I don't know, but I mean, there's a potential that if one's real low and one's real high, and you average, this could still work out to be the average. But it does clarify how we measure that that point of what you can fill to. I mean, we get arguments, or not arguments, but people come in all the time, and they're confused about, well, how do I measure the the highest adjacent lot? What does that mean? Is it a point? Is it the slope? Is it one side? Is it the other side? You know, it's really unclear right now, so.
And right now, I, personal example, I've seen something happen close to where I live. My neighbor's got an eight-foot retaining wall right beside her because they went to the highest adjacent lot to fill and then brought in extra fill and built on top of that. So now the house is well over what it normally would have been if we measured the two adjacent lots at an average.
Yeah, so to to your point, what we have right now, let's say this was the average, but let's say they had said, hey, this neighbor next to me is the higher adjacent lot, and it's still under a foot over the crown of the road. This could potentially have been higher, you know what I mean? So the average kind of helps hopefully avoid that, where you've got one very high lot, one very low lot. You're going to the middle instead of going to the higher. Now, it is still limited under our current ordinance to the one foot over the crown of the road. That's the maximum, but even that's like, okay, it's one foot over the crown of the road here, but in the back of the lot where it slopes back, you know, this is higher. It's just the the measure, the way we measure, in my opinion, is one of the biggest problems. So setting the criteria for, you know, points along the lot and points on the crown of the road. And then whatever we decide, whether that's, hey, you take points and you take the lower, or you take points and you take the higher. But the average seems like it would eliminate problems where somebody's claiming the side's higher, so they're they're going to go to that instead of trying to slope it a little bit more naturally.
And also limiting the amount of fill that can be brought in total will help that situation altogether.
Yes, I think the the statement, you know, one we, you cap, you know, even if you do have a, you're asking for a letter of map revision, you're asking for a commercial stormwater, you're asking for a drastic elevation, you know, providing some type of limit on that, and then limiting additional fill in the building envelope will certainly affect some of those for sure. Yes, sir.
So Matt, if we did, if we do this, you know, if we take this up, send it to council going forward, it would eliminate the possibility, we could still measure because we're limiting the amount of fill total that they can bring in on the building envelope, which would eliminate the possibility of bringing in tons of fill and building on top of that.
Oh, yes, sir, yeah. So you would be, so getting back to the finished grade, right? You know, whatever we set the standard at for fill, if you limit additional fill in the building envelope, you're getting to your point. Like, this is the fill you get. This is going to be your finished grade. You're not going to pull it in, retain a wall it up, and then, you know, use the way we are required to measure height to, you know, try to, you know, get around stuff.
We wouldn't have to worry about doing a, changing the method because we've eliminated the possibility of bringing in.
Yeah, yes, sir.
But you can redistribute the dirt on your property.
Well, that's a great question, and something I wanted us to talk about a little bit because right now, we don't define like grading. So that I would usually say
Grading.
if you've got dirt on your property, you didn't bring in dirt. You're just smoothing the lot out in some way. That's that's grading versus fill, where you're adding dirt to a piece of property. Where our ordinance is right now, it's basically all fill, right? Like, so if you have dirt on your property, maybe you got a big mound in the front, you know, I want to smooth this out. Well, in smoothing it out, you change the elevation in the back more than a foot. You have to come in and get a stabilization and stormwater plan because you've changed, you've filled that part of the property more than a foot. So something, you know, I'm glad you brought that up because something we need to think about, too, and something that I can work on for a recommendation draft is a definition and maybe something similar. You know, we could work out around the margins for, you know, when someone has existing dirt and they just want to grade that property versus adding to that, adding dirt to that property. The trick there is, you know, enforcement, you know, obviously, you know, somebody comes in on a weekend and brings in a truckload of dirt, no one reports it to us. And then when they come get their, you know, permit, it's like, oh, that dirt was always there. And it's like, okay, you know, usually, you can point out fresh dirt, but, you know, people do get tricky occasionally. Or there may be an instance where, you know, some work's been done by the town or something like that, you know, that's added dirt to that property. So we can work on that for sure.
I did, again, as I mentioned, I watched the meeting. So I know there was a lot of discussion around, and I thought it was a good discussion around kind of segregating fill, right? To certain zones, residential versus commercial, oceanfront versus other flood zones, VE versus not. I think impact on house height, which I know we've talked about. So does what you've presented here address all these things that came up from, in in a way, does best segregate what fill is allowed where and when?
Yeah, you know, when we looked at that, unless there's, you know, clear, you know, from the planning board, hey, we want to limit fill in like a flood hazard area, you know, hey, we don't want to allow anymore. Really, really what you want to do with fill in flood hazard areas is either allow it to let people get a letter of map provision to get out of it, or say, we don't want any fill, because then you get credit from your community rating system. Sorry, I don't have the numbers on how much that is, but it it's, it can be pretty significant as far as the total points you get if you limit. But it really, so what this does is kind of not look at it based on the zoning. It does have an allowance for commercial projects with commercial stormwater, so it does have a difference for commercial versus, you know, purely residential development. But, you know, when you look at the topography of lots, each one's a little bit different. So, you know, if we were to establish it, like, say, based on, you know, you're in the R7 and you're in the R6, you're probably going to run into more problems than not just because you're going to have a lot of, a lot of lots in the R7 that are very different, and a lot of lots in the R6 is very different. So really kind of establishing, hey, this is the criteria we would want to use. You know, letter of map provision's a little bit different, stormwater's a little bit different. You know, if somebody has a really drastic elevation that they can get a surveyor to actually put their professional seal on, that's a little different. Outside of that, unless, like I said, we want to get into, you know, how we handle it in flood hazard areas, I think this is about as balanced as an approach as as we could come up with.
And then there was also discussion about, I don't know who said this, but should fill of three feet or more count in the total house height?
Yeah, so that's that's getting into back how we measure height, right? So under our current local act and our current standards for how we measure, to me, that's a clarification, right? So that's one thing that we'll need to get some more, you know, I can broach that with legal when I talk to them. But, you know, if we change that from just the finished grade to, hey, now we're adding three feet of dirt, you know, you're not measuring the the building height at the four corners of the structure, you're measuring it at the original grade at the four corners of the structure. That's a clarification. So that could, and that's why, that's, in my opinion, why the the way we measure building height has not changed in since 2006 or whenever it was established. Because I do think you get into clarifying how you measure. That runs into the referenda and the local act requirement.
Well, I just need to point out that, you know, this does not allow, I mean, this basically is going to eliminate bulkheads because we have so many properties that slope down towards the water. So unless your neighbors on both sides built it up already, you're not going to be permitted to put in a bulkhead and fill up to it. So looking from my backyard, which slopes down, and we left it natural, and we're
Most on the ICW will.
Happy with it. Both neighbors have, you know, put in fill and a retaining wall, and, you know, they got their swimming pools over there, and we don't have any problem.
Sure.
Trying to think of it is, you know, if they had not been allowed to do that, if the if this was the rule when when they were done, particularly in an area that is low enough that when we have exceptionally high tides, they get inundated with water, okay? They're not going to choose to put their swimming pool down there. So what are they going to do? They're going to put it on pylons. So from my backyard, I'm going to be looking at their pylons and the underneath of their swimming pool and the plumbing. I would much rather have a retaining wall with fill beside me than be looking at that. I would much rather have a retaining wall with fill beside me than be looking at that.
I mean, obviously, everybody has an opinion on what they'd rather look at in their next door neighbor. You know, bulkheads, we talked a lot or a little bit about retaining walls and bulkheads and shoreline protection measures, hardened shoreline protection measures, especially last month. As you mentioned, they afford the property owner, you know, benefits. They impact the shoreline in other areas, you know, if you've ever seen, you know, a terminal groin or, you know, some of these other thing, other hardened shoreline protection measures, other areas around them tend to erode quicker or areas further downstream erode in a different pattern than they would with a natural shoreline. You know, you see a lot of, you know, the North Carolina Coastal Federation's a big one about, you know, they have a lot of information about, you know, creating a natural shoreline and the benefits of that versus a hardened shoreline. But you're right, the hardened shoreline structure provides benefit to the individual property owner. So what the board and town council eventually will have to weigh is, you know, do, you know, which one weighs out more in the end, is the individual property owner benefits versus the potential community benefits of having a more natural shoreline for sure.
Well, if Kama says it's okay to put the bulkhead and Kama's assuming that obviously you're going to fill up to it, then who are we to say you can't?
Where's it? It's town of Oak Island.
To clarify, a swimming pool is a building accessory, correct?
It's an accessory structure, yes, sir.
So if you put a swimming pool in, you would be allowed to come in and fill a little bit to do that, correct?
Well, I mean, you'd have to meet these fill requirements. That's right. So if you-
Redistribution of that, of that land as well.
Yeah, so let's say you're-
Are you going to be able to come up, you know, four or five feet to keep it out of the king tide, to keep it, you know, the fish from swimming in your pool?
You can build a swimming pool up, correct?
As long as you meet the accessory, you know, building requirements.
They could build it up off the ground and put a deck around it.
We see them all, I mean, beachfront for sure. We see people that, you know, have a elevated house and a deck and a pool out on that elevated deck as well. Yeah.
I, I do want to say, I'm not sure that the intention of fill is to necessarily stop bulkheads. So I do think it's something that we do need to be thinking about. And I would bet you that 98% of the properties on the ICW in particular have bulkheads. So I don't think we want to try now penalize those that don't. So I think however we deal with fill, I think making sure that we have, we take the bulkhead into consideration, whether we fill all the way up to it, whether we allow there to be a little bit that isn't. However, I don't think we need to, I think that's a good add and we need to keep that in consideration. Like the grading that you mentioned, going hand in hand with this one as well.
Yeah, and I'll work with stormwater, Kama and all those folks to make sure that we include something for
Thank you.
bulkheads as well. Absolutely.
Let's look at this picture for a minute because everybody says it's terrible, right?
Not terrible. It just allows for runoff. That was my only point.
But all the stormwater runoff from the impervious surface is treated.
Yeah.
So, you know, it's hard for us to get it in our head that there is no stormwater runoff from the impervious surface shown in this picture. Okay, so now we have a retaining wall and we actually go back up to another wall. And if I'm looking at it correctly, from that next wall back to the concrete, that is part of your stormwater system. Right there, that's gravel there.
Absolutely.
This is actually what we need or what we're looking for. What we're not seeing is the future development and how it ties into this to, to stop sheet flow onto that lot.
Well, right now, right now, the stormwater, you've got the gutter system, so they're going into some type of retention system.
Yeah, and it's in that upper-
I'm only talking about the, the perimeter of the building envelope where the slope, I, I go back to, why, to me, if this retaining wall were a little bit higher above the grade of the land or you had some type of, of divot like this where the water didn't just rush down over that hill to your neighbor, but they're staying more, that's my only point. It's not that there's not a stormwater system incorporated. I didn't mean to imply that.
No, no, you're fine. You, but you know, that grass area, that's going to capture a large amount of the rainfall. I would truly say, so there, you know, this is, this is what you're looking for. The key is, is, or I think the key is, is to come down, not go up in grade down roadside. And you, now we're in a, in a different stance because we're not at the beginning of the development of an island. We're at the fill-in stage and there's consequences to any manner or any method that you take to give people safety by building their house above the crown of the road. That's, you know, that's a big concern.
So in, in this, we do go above the crown of the road, correct?
You would take an average of the crown of the road and the
And the four.
The two adjacent lots in the front property and that would be what you would do in the front setback area.
Which may not get you above the crown of the road. Because if you have one lot that's two foot beneath the road and one lot that's one foot above the road, then you may be at the road.
If you're sitting up on a hill, you have little concern. If you're sitting down, that's where, and that's where the crown.
Would pull you up some, but right now, let's say, under the current ordinance here, one foot over the crown of the road or highest with the adjacent, or the highest adjacent lot, whichever is less is the current standard. The highest adjacent lot may be lower than the one foot over the crown of the road. In which case you couldn't, you couldn't get to your point. You know, you couldn't get to a foot over the crown of the road because the highest adjacent lot is, is lower of the two.
Yeah, like the current ordinance, I don't know what to believe or what it truly is because everybody tells you a different thing. Rick Patterson said you couldn't bring more than one truckload of dirt. Well, that's not one foot of fill on a lot.
No.
It's, it's constantly changing and it's, it's, uh, it's wrong.
And so we're trying to, the endpoint of all this, whatever you decide the limitations, et cetera, is to make it as clear as possible. That's why, that's why one thing, you know, whatever you tie it to, I do think we need to establish where you measure, you know, whatever height you have. We need some measuring points along that lot that are established in the ordinance. So that, you know, you're saying, hey, this is how we have to, to look at this to avoid, you know, some of what, what you're describing, I think, you know.
But, but like we spoke at last meeting, one fill ordinance isn't going to work for, what I would say is the three types of lots that we have on the island.
To me, what would help is if, if we could literal, if somebody could give us an address. You showed me one that was just a vacant land, okay? And but just give us four or five addresses of the different types of, because I do think part of this is we've all got to lay eyes on the different types of lots being impacted and then understand what this proposal would do in those three or five cases. Because I, I think seeing it brings it to life. And I do think, to your point, it's going to be hard to come up with necessarily one that sort of meets the wide ranging variety of, of impacted properties. But it could help us at least galvanize our perspective a little bit around who's going to be impacted and how much.
Yeah, and I think what you would do there is probably look at-
Not as a group.
Yeah, don't, don't do it as a group, please.
Walk around the yard, go around back.
Don't have a quorum. But I think, I mean, Davey, you can correct me if I'm wrong, the, the, in my opinion, the three types of lot you might see on the island are ones that are in the V zone, which is the coastal flood hazard area. That's typically the, close to the beachfront, right? Then you have interior lots, which are, would just be outside of a flood hazard area. And then maybe establish something for the A zone, which is the, the non-coastal flood hazards. So that might be on like the, most of the lots on the intercoastal, they don't have that V designation, you know, because they're not having regular wave action. That's really the main difference between the two for those who aren't familiar. And that's going to be mostly along the, the intercoastal side of stuff. There's some lots on the beachfront that are in the flood, or not on the beachfront, but on like second row or third row that are still in that A zone. But if we were going to do it, I, I think it would be better to do it, looking at everything that's required and all the factors, it would be better to look at maybe those three types of zones versus the town zoning. Because like I said, you're going to have
I would agree.
Stuff in, stuff that's in all the residential zoning districts and, you know, got to be in all that, so.
And see, I think, I'm sorry, either way.
Let me make one point. Lisa, what do we have on our next agenda for next month?
That's a Matt question. That's yours.
So we haven't, so the deadline for, you know, your next agenda hasn't gone yet. So someone could obviously bring in an application, you know, to something that requires your review. As of right now, you have continuing working on the height exception would be on your agenda. This would continue to be on your agenda until a recommendation is made. Council's also, I believe, went ahead and passed down our request to have y'all examine our single family dwelling size allowances, the special use permit limitations and the size limitations we have there as well. You know, future stuff that I can forecast and foresee is, you know, we're trying to get the, the contract for the comprehensive land use plan finalized and worked out. We've got a, we're working with council to establish dates to do workshops for the table of uses that you forwarded along. So we got a lot of stuff to cover if that was your question.
So where I'm leading is to your point. Could you send us some addresses and let us go out individually and just lay eyes on a couple of lots?
Well, you need to have permission. I mean,
No, you can go on the street and just look at the lot.
Vacant lot, and I think the vacant lot is the one because that's to be developed. So it's not like there's a residence, but even coming to yours and scheduling time with you.
Walk around the, you walk around to the-
And actually lay eyes on three examples of what we would be looking at. So that we have a visual aspect of how this is going to affect these particular type of lots. And that would give us a month to go out and just drive by, look at and come back. And we'd have our own perception of how it's going to work.
Yeah, I'd be happy to. I mean, I could find you three vacant lots pretty easily. Like I said, don't go on them because you don't want trespass.
No, just drive by, look at-
You can look from the road.
Matt, from APA requirements, I know when we have an application before us, we can't do any pre-work like that. We're, we're just, we're prohibited from doing that. But we're okay to do that when we're just considering a general text amendment?
I'm confused by your question.
I thought when we had an application before us, one of the zoning things that we learned in our training was that you, you can't really go out and look at a property when you've got an application before you.
That's when you have a quasi judicial hearing.
That's judicial hearing.
I think for those quasi judicial hearings. It doesn't apply on a general application. So if someone comes before us, we can go ahead and do that.
Oh, yeah.
And this is more initiated anyway, so it's, yeah. Okay, okay. Just to clarify, I want to make sure we're not doing anything that's not allowed.
Quasi judicial, don't go evaluate the site, don't have any discussion. General applications, I mean, you can have all the
Okay.
pre-discussions you want.
I think the big difference would be this is for townwide, this is, you're not looking at a
Yeah, that's right. Yeah.
Question, general text amendment, we can, we're free to do all these kinds of things.
Go ahead.
Question would be if we, if someone, if we identify those few locations, would it be a possibility of doing drone footage of all of them so that we could all be looking at it and talk about it at the same time?
Yeah, if I can schedule them, I can get the drone.
That's a great idea.
Do it from different angles. Looking down isn't going to help very much.
We need to do it from different angles.
That's what you need.
Yeah, you wouldn't believe what that drone can do.
That drone can absolutely, it can go right over and look.
Right.
And, and it would be good not only for us to see them, but when we put them here and then review them, for folks who review this meeting to be able to see what we're looking at and try, trying to address.
Yeah.
That's a great idea. And Sean would probably do that very easily.
Yeah, he flies sites for us for now, no problems. I don't think it would be an issue. Yeah.
And I would also suggest if there's one or two lots that you had a specific question about, I mean, because you're all over town on a regular basis anyway. If you see something and you would wonder how that would be affected or, you know, then keep, keep in mind that address, maybe send it to Matt.
Yeah, you can send it to me. No.
Can we take pictures and send you the pictures?
Maybe not. Stand there and take pictures of houses. I wouldn't.
We can send diagrams of what we're speaking of or trying to define.
You can send a, you can send a diagram in, sure. I, I just wouldn't, so if you send it to the group, don't group reply. The easiest thing to do would be to send it to me or Lisa and we can forward it out and BCC everybody. So there's no chance of like, somebody hitting reply all by accident and starting a open meeting type of conversation.
Well, I just wanted to put this out there since we're talking about like measuring the height, where we're measuring the height from. You know, I sort of wrestle with measuring the height from a starting point on any lot that's lower than the road. I think that should be the minimum.
Right.
The only reason why you would measure it higher than that would be, you know, if, if both of the neighbors
Or even higher.
are higher. But, you know, I sort of wrestle with it because I feel like in the VE zone, you know, we're allowing the extra height in the VE zone. But then when you see fill brought in and then we're, we're still given the extra height after the fill. But then I also wrestle with the idea of measuring from below grade, but below the grade of the road. So just for me, that's sort of like an internal battle that I have going on. I don't feel like anybody should be forced to be below the road.
You know, I, I think instead of determining lot types by sections, I think you should let the surveyor determine the lot type and we define what's allowed in that situation. So the surveyor says, the crown of the road in the center of the lot area is elevation of zero. Okay, so, and then the actual elevation of the existing lot is negative one foot. Well, you should be allowed to bring that lot up to one foot above the crown of the road from that center point of the lot on the road. And that would be one type of lot, which could be anywhere around the island. You know, if it's, you know, if it's, if the lot is level with the road or beneath the height of the crown of the road in the center point, you should be able to bring it up one foot above the crown of the road. Anything past there, maybe some special fill permit or something. But anything past one foot above the crown of the road, that's where your height to your house starts. You know, on lots that are already, you know, one foot above the crown of the road to four foot in height, well, now we're looking at a balance and fill situation. You're not going to allow fill on those lots. You're going to balance and fill and then slope into your other lots, your adjoining lot, you know, your higher one and your lower one. And that would be defined as a lot type, you know, what heights we would define that lot. And then the surveyor, he shows actual existing elevation and the elevation in the center of the crown of the road, which identifies that lot type. Then you have the third lot type, which is where you have drastic elevation changes. And typically it may be eight feet above the crown of the road here and lower over here. With that lot actually, it shouldn't be allowed to, to be level off of the highest side. This should actually have to come down off the highest side. Otherwise, you're just building more of a cliff on the other side for the next adjoining person. You know, I've worked on this for the last couple of weeks, but it looks like, um, looks like we'll have more time now and maybe I can get some diagrams together and stuff.
Yeah.
You know, it's not always go up. Sometimes it's come down also.
If you've got a low, if you've got two low lots and I built my house here and then you can come in and raise your house up to the road and on a vacant lot and my house is still down here, all that's still coming down on me?
Well, no, what, what actually happens in the, I'll say the formula that I've, that, you know, that I'm speaking of, if everybody's center point is the center of the lot at the center of the crown of the road, if the road is falling downhill, the next lot's going to be lower overall. If it goes uphill, if the road's going uphill this way, this lot's going to be a little bit higher than you. You know, if, if you took it from the highest adjacent grade, then you may be three foot higher over here. But if you take it from the center point of the lot, you're likely going to be much smoother. You know, everything's going to follow the grade of the road, which helps in sheet flow, speeds of sheet flow. And then actually reduces the height of the, of one foot above the crown of the road. Because just because you're allowed one foot above the crown of the road in the center of your lot, doesn't mean that the high side of your lot is going to be one foot above the crown of the road. It's more likely going to be more in line with the, the crown of that road.
Yeah, but if the house, if an original house is below the grade of the road and the vacant lot next to it is below the grade of the load, then you're saying, oh, this is measured from here to here. This one's going to be up here.
Yeah.
And then all of a sudden, you just throw it all that over here to your neighbors.
The, the pre-existing
Yeah.
houses that did not bring in fill, yes, they're, they're going to get water.
Is the intention, go ahead.
I, I just think that if you're going to be above your neighbor, if your neighbor is down in the hole, that you have to have measures to contain your stormwater.
Which is the stormwater system in the ground.
But you have to contain your stormwater.
To me, that is the piece we need to, what is the purpose of fill? I mean, is it to just get a flat lot? Is it to be higher or the same level as the road? Is it to mitigate stormwater from running into your, I feel like we need to sort of, I mean, if, if it's just to be the, the same elevation of the road, I think we just need to level set on that. To me, the issue with, with fill that we have to deal with is not the aesthetic, not the, all that. Because we, the, the undulations of our land is what makes our island so beautiful, you know, and different. We're not just one big flat piece of sand. I do think we have to deal with the impact of stormwater on our neighbors from whatever we do. That, to me, that's sort of the central thing here.
We are. Everything's being captured and sent into a holding system.
Only, only from the impervious, only from the impervious.
Right.
We'll, we'll come back to this. I don't want to keep belaboring a point. I just, I feel like we're losing, what is the purpose of the fill? Is it to get it up to the road so that every lot should be at the, at the level of the road? Is it to stop, you know, is it to capture more of your land so that it's more usable to the homeowner?
All of those things.
Okay. I just want to know what problem we're trying to solve.
Typically, the purpose of fill is protect investment. You know, nobody should be, build beneath the crown of the road. I mean, because the town's stormwater down the right of way is going to fill in your lot before it continues down there.
Right.
You know, so the purpose of fill, of what the true intent should be is to protect property, not to elevate your house or get a better view or this or this or this.
Right, right, right.
All of the pervious surface area, according to this article, is supposed to be pushed to the town's right of way for the town to treat. But the town doesn't have the capacity in the swells that they have going down the roads to treat that water or to capture that water.
And now we're back to the right of way issue.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's just a, go ahead.
We're going in circles.
Simple question, sorry to ask it. When somebody wants to put fill on a lot, what's the procedure? They come to the development department, they ask, can I put fill on my lot and how much? And then somebody goes out and helps them, right?
Yeah, they need to get a land.
Decide.
They need to get a land development permit. They need to, if they're going to propose fill to a certain amount, they need to get a fill permit and submit a, a great engineering grading and stormwater plan. But we evaluate their proposal based on the current criteria and the ordinance.
And how many of those fill permits do you guys evaluate on, say, a monthly basis?
I don't have those numbers in front of me right now. I can definitely have them for you next month. I can look them up.
I think that, to Dural's point, that would be important to know. Like, what, what are the challenges people are seeing? And how many of those times, I know, I think, I heard Steve say in the May meeting that, you know, he doesn't want to do greater than in terms of the crown of the road. He thinks we should stay at less than. And I think we have a current UDO amendment in our package, right? That's making that change. So have we pulled that out while we vet through this?
I, I mean, yeah, that hasn't been reviewed by council yet. That's part of our table of uses stuff.
Just want to make sure we're not sending multiple.
I think it needs to be greater, but there needs to be exceptions to that.
So how much fill can be brought in before a fill permit's needed?
So based on this, any amount of fill, you're supposed to review it for a compliance with our fill ordinance. Once you go above a foot of fill on a piece of property, we need a engineered stabilization and stormwater plan. But fill is defined in our ordinance as any dirt added to a lot. So we have to evaluate it, you know, for compliance with our ordinance. Now, it might be, you know, you going out and showing me the elevations and showing that you meet the, the requirements of the ordinance. And then when you meet that higher threshold, that's when you need to come in with the engineered fill plan and stormwater plan at that point. But if you're going to change the elevation on the lot, we have to make sure that it complies with our fill ordinance requirements. So we have to review it at that point.
Our fill ordinance is, is really short right now or something.
That's why I want to fix it. That's why I had this whole conversation.
If you put in a pool, you have to show where that dirt goes. By what we're being, by what Matt's saying, if you build a crawl space house, where does the dirt go out that footing? That's now considered fill. But, you know, the, a bigger effect is when, when people build these houses and they clear these lots, they take the root mat off of it, the trees have an area about that high of area that is acceptable to insects, diseases, termites, everything. And they're not, nobody's being allowed to bring that dirt back in. So you can save the tree, but it's going to die.
And let's go back to Melanie's point about, it wasn't the purpose of your point, it's the unintended consequence. So let's take the pool, for example. Do we really want everybody putting their pools on decks?
No.
I don't think so either. I think, now, do, maybe that's not our right to say, but I'm just saying, do we want to create the incentive for everyone to put their pools on deck because they don't want to now have the sand to have to deal with? Then we're being too restrictive there. So I, 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 these are all those unintended things that we need to take into consideration so that whatever we're proposing, we're not leading people in a path
That's right.
That's against where we really want to lead them.
Yeah, and that's why this is just a discussion and not a recommendation.
Do we really care that everybody that buys a lot on the intercoastal waterway just has to build a bulkhead to flood everybody else so they can put their swimming pool up? I mean, you know. I mean, it's, it's whatever side you want to look at, you know, because.
I see bulkhead a little different, but I agree with, I get your point.
It's flooding everybody else.
But if you buy a lot that goes downhill to the water, you know your lot goes downhill to the water. And then if you come up and say, well, I'm sorry, I can't put a bulkhead and build my swimming pool, okay, go buy another lot. All right, so we do have a full agenda for next month. Yep. And Matt, yes?
So I was going to ask how the board felt about, you've, you have three big topics. And so I was wondering if you wanted to take the two that were the council directives for next month's meeting and maybe put fill to August.
Let's do that. Let's postpone the rest of the fill discussion. That'll give Matt time to.
If we could still circulate the information related to it and if we can get the addresses or drones, I think that's good to help us moving along. Thank you.
I think you gave us some, some permit statistics, like kind of where the permits were historically for the last six months or so. That might give us some of that data as well. Like, why are people having to ask for them and where?
So yes, we're going to take the council directive next month. Matt can send us out some potential addresses and then the following month, we'll take this back up. You can have like a proposal and then we can take these addresses and see how that proposal's going to affect these type of lots going forward.
Yeah, and anything y'all think of in the interim, you know, additional information or, you know, maybe we should look at this. Just send it to me and I'll pull it, pull it all together for you and send it out to the group for their evaluation.
Yes.
I wanted to ask Carrie, you had mentioned, I don't remember how long ago, that, that you wanted us to discuss accessory dwelling units.
ADUs.
I think we need to discuss that at the same time as we discuss the height, the
Size.
The size limit. Because it, it's directly correlated. I don't mean to complicate what's going to already be a complicated issue.
No, I think it's a good point.
But if we're going to take that up, I think we need to do it together.
Matt, what, maybe we should ask Matt his opinion on that.
Very beginning next month and then you guys can, you know, decide how you want to structure that conversation going forward. But I would say, let's save any, anything we also want to look at until we actually have it on our agenda for next month. And then you guys can, can decide as a group from there.
So, so Melanie, what, what's your issue? You think that people, we, the size of a house of a residential entity would, could be adjusted based on having the access to ADUs is your point?
If you're going to do the accessory dwelling unit, is it going to be included in that? Is it not going to be included in that?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I just want to clarify for, for the public, that's where we were going with that. So Matt, do you, what are you saying? Don't, don't include that with the house size conversation?
I would not start there. Like, you guys are, you guys have gotten a direction from town council to review something. And before you've even started the review on it, you're talking about adding, complicating it. Let's start that discussion officially next month when it's on your agenda. Instead of talking about all the nuance and the things that you could affect with it. So I, I just, I don't want us to have a discussion and then, you know, people and members of public say, oh, it's not even on their agenda that they're discussing this and, you know, it's getting added on.
And you do have two meetings to be able to discuss that before they want a recommendation by itself.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, good.
That will be good. Any board reports?
Yeah, I just wanted to let everybody know, I, just for educational purposes, I attended the Brunswick County Planning Board meeting last week. Just because I wanted to know how they conducted themselves and what they were looking at. It was interesting, they had about nine or 10 rezoning requests. Most of it moving residential to either single family, to, to multifamily or commercial low density. It was a very striking example of how our county is growing and what it looks like from a development perspective. It was interesting that all nine or 10 of them were approved. But, but what, what I thought was really interesting for us as a board was they have a very, the county planning board has a very nice structure around a rezoning request, you know, how it comes to them, the things they go through and look at in terms of traffic impact and environmental studies. And so it was very well structured and I learned a lot in that session. And I would encourage any of us on the board to go to those county planning board meetings. There are things, you know, coming before that board that affect all of us. And, and it was very educational for me.
Absolutely. Yeah, that's not unusual. Coming from a county, the first place I worked, we had, we usually had three or four subdivisions and three or four rezonings on every planning board meeting. So, yeah, it was, it was tough. You just got a lot of land, you know, got a lot of questions and you got a lot of land.
Yeah, that's right.
David?
Yes, sir.
I am good. Thank you again. And
Need a motion.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. All in favor? We're adjourned. Thank you, guys.
Got a lot, a lot coming at us.